All right, motion shows.
Call the regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, 4:30 PM to order. First item on agendas, you consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on any? See a nun, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no, motion carries. Item number 2.1, gambling permit for the Church of St. Mary's, and that's for February 7th, 2020.
I'll up for the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? See a nun, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no, motion carries. Item number 3.1, comprehensive plan amendment for the park trails section.
Dave Schnobert, Community Development Director. This concerns a request made by Scott Dreckman on behalf of All Store Public Storage. To, actually, it's two different things that you're going to be considering at today's meeting. One is a change in the comprehensive plan, and the second item is the actual vacation of an existing easement area. So we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan change that is under consideration. And this is to vacate a trail segment that is currently in place and extends from Carl Drive to, in a kind of a northwesterly direction, to North Highland Avenue. And following a public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request with one condition. And I should note that the Park and Recreation Commission also recommended that the same request be approved subject to the exchange of this trail segment for a new trail segment. And that was done at their October 14th meeting. At the present time, this particular trail is located in, it's part of two different plats. The width of the trail varies from 20 feet to 10 feet. And the one condition is that the owner agrees to provide a new trail segment of 20 feet that would extend from where the existing trail location is on Carl Drive to the west, to North Highland Avenue. And if you look at your attachments, you'll find an aerial photo that I think kind of depicts what is being proposed.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
I guess I feel it's been studied and agreed upon that everyone sees that it's a, you know, that it will be a good fit either way. So I guess I'm gonna make a motion to approve, offer the resolution, and waive the reading approving the with conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.1, Communication from MR Paving and Excavating requesting a project extension.
Thank you, Mr. President. The general contractor on the 2019 Utility Street Nally Project is requesting, submitted a written request to extend the substantial completion on the front street segment of the project from this fall, the end of November, to July 3rd of next year. This is a six-block segment of total reconstruct underground infrastructure as well as roadway improvements. The contractor has made nice progress in some deep excavation, and I agree with their, with their request. We would, if the council approves it, we would communicate with the local property owners and hopefully address any concerns that they would have. We have a representative from the contracting firm available if you have any questions, or I could try and answer questions as well.
Thank you.
Can you talk about where they're at and what's, what's left to do on that property?
Sure, sure. Mr. President and members, as of today, all the underground work has been completed and the grading and graveling of the six-block segment should be completed. There's some final cleanup work that needs to be done, probably by the end of next week at the latest. We should have it all ready for, for winter weather. So the thing that would remain is the concrete curb and gutter, the paving, the infill of the sidewalk areas, et cetera. We were planning on doing, I believe the contractor's going to do some temporary street lighting. That was one of the concerns we discussed right away, because it's pretty dark down there, so we get that taken care of right away.
And is that long of an extension, normal? That just seems like it's quite a ways into next year.
Well, Mr. President, with, you know, spring weather, you just never know. I think that's, it's good to let it settle as long as we, we can. It's, this is not an uncommon practice. A lot of cities let things ride over winter, and when we do normally do subdivisions, new underground subdivisions, we let them sit for at least four years and longer if we can. So it's not practical with finished roadways, but I think it makes sense to do it in this case, and we'll end up with a better, better product in the end.
So it's a gravel overlay for the winter?
It'll just be a gravel section, yes.
I'm gonna authorize the proposal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Just one question for Mr. Kaler. All the affected residents down there have been notified, correct, or that it's coming?
We will notify them, the contractor will either notify them by email or by letter or both, because some of them don't have email. And we may even hold a neighborhood meeting like we did to begin with, we'll see how it goes. But the feedback that I have gotten from individuals is they're, they're in favor of this.
Did you have a question?
I got a couple of questions.
Just step up to the mic, name an address just for the record.
Michael Hossi, 1229 South Front Street. You mentioned they're putting in temporary lighting, that was one of the main concerns.
Mr. Hossi, the agreement with the contractors to put in some type of lighting, I suspect that it will be temporary. They'll probably put it up in those wooden poles.
Right.
And then they'll just have to string, it's a high voltage, so they'll have to string a different voltage. So yes, we'll get some lighting down.
And I take it they're gonna have all our driveway approaches all fixed up so we can get in and out easy?
There will be gravel approaches, but yeah, they will feather them out, and hopefully, when you use the word "easy," I'm not sure what that means, but they'll be accessible.
It's two feet lower now anyways.
Yeah, I know, we'll, we'll get it done.
What about trash pickup, that gonna be going up and down Front Street? Or do we still gotta go to corners and stuff for stuff?
No, it'll still be out on the, on the Front Street. And I, I don't know if mail will be changed or not, Matt, you know? Matt Mathewitz from Mathewitz Construction can probably.
Name and address just for the record.
Yeah, Matt Mathewitz, MR Paving and Excavating, 2020 North Spring Street. We do plan to work with the city PUC department, we'll get temporary lighting up so that there's lighting down there. We've talked with Mr. Falcons down there already, so that'll be in plan, in place. We wanted to make sure that we would get approval from the council, obviously, before we, we talked with them. We will ramp your driveways, we'll, we'll level out that steep slope for you. We'll bring more aggregate in, that's our plan in the next two or three days. We wanted to get the road section open, and then we'll try to mellow all those out so it's not such a steep drop there for you guys. Garbage pickup would go down on Front Street, so you just gotta get it out to the street right away like you would have in the past. And the mailboxes will be in a bank like they are now, but they'll be moved down to Front Street.
Okay, that was another one, another one of my concerns. You guys will have all your heavy equipment moved off, off the road by then?
Yeah.
For snow plowing and everything, all that'll be done?
Yes.
And snow plowing, you're gonna use regular snow plows down there, raders, or what?
Mr. Hossi, it's, I've discussed that with the street department, they're gonna use a grader. As you know, the difference is a blade you can keep up and you're not digging up the gravel.
That's what I was wondering.
A truck you gotta ride, so yeah, we've got a grader program for that.
Then in the spring, what about water drainage? Are the drains set so the water can run off, or two feet higher?
Yeah, that'll be part of the contractor's maintenance responsibilities, is to make sure the, the water drains.
Right, so right now the drains are all in place, the castings will not be set on them, so there'll be clear rock on there, so the water should be able to drain through. But if you guys have any issues running there, we'll get you a phone number to call.
Great, thank you. Any more concerns? See a nun, on favor say aye.
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 Foes no, motion carries. Item 5.1, ordinance number 19-033, fifth series, second consideration. Roger.
Mr. President, council members, this would be the second consideration of the new ordinance imposing the graduated penalties, minimum penalties for blight violations. And under the current charter, it does not need to be read, but otherwise it would be ready for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'll offer a motion to waive that reading and implement this ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Do we want to talk about, Roger, you just want to talk about the penalties? I think that should.
Well, basically, the idea is that to try and give a deterrent to repeat violations, that the minimum fine for the first violation would be $100. If there is a second within a rolling 12-month period, it'd be $300. And if there would be a third, it would be $500. And the timing of the occurrence would be whenever the violation is present, not if there would, the date of the conviction, just so it's clear to property owners that they need to make sure that they don't reoffend within that 12 months.
And this goes into effect 30 days from publication, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, any more questions? See a nun, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no, motion carries. Item 5.2, receive information on the residential use of industrial zoning districts. Mr. Schnobert.
Okay, the city council at your September 17th meeting requested that the Planning Commission provide you with some information on residential uses in industrial zoning districts. And you asked for that information back within 60 days, so staff, you know, provided the commission with that information at their last meeting, which was on October 31st. And at that time, the commission approved a motion to forward this information to you for your consideration. And then they also added to advise you to proceed cautiously with any rezoning. What I would like to do is just briefly go through the, the information and the surveying that, that we did. The first source of information was a survey of Minnesota communities. We sent a 13-question survey to 26 communities in Minnesota. This was done through Survey Monkey. John Nysley did this work. And the survey was generally sent to greater Minnesota communities of similar size and character to New Ulm. We also sent it to two metro area suburbs, primarily because metro area suburbs tend to be more on the leading edge of changing trends in zoning. And so we were interested in seeing if they maybe had some types of zoning classifications that we hadn't been exposed to yet. Of the 26 communities, we had 21 that completed the survey, so that's a response rate of, of 80%, which we were pleased with. Real quickly, of the 21 that responded, 80% or 17 communities do not allow any residential units in their industrial districts. Of the 20% or four that do allow residential uses, they are limited to certain specific kinds of situations. So it's not just a blanket, you can put a residential use here, there's conditions that are associated with that. For example, one community said you could only do it if it was associated with housing for an industry that was located in that location. So it, it's that type of authorization. Another finding, 100% of the communities do not allow the construction of standalone single-family dwellings in their industrial districts, 100%. Another finding of the community surveyed, 90% or 19 of the communities do not allow the construction of a chouse. We defined a chouse as being kind of a combined storage space, workspace with living quarters. And then of the 10% or two communities that would, you know, the specifications for that use are, are listed. You know, in the, the first question, there were four communities that allowed res, or industrial uses, and you'll see the same answers for this particular question. So it just kind of flowed down that way. We asked for information about zoning districts in the community where they would allow the construction of a chouse, and there were a number of responses to that, and you can find those in the tabulation that we provided. And then we asked how often communities had to deal with people living in storage buildings? And on a scale of one to 10, we had one community that said seven, we had another community that said three, and all of the rest said one. So I guess, you know, it's, hasn't been too much of a problem in other communities, but there are some locations. Be kind of interesting to follow up on that and see what, what they're dealing with. We conducted a second survey of property owners within the area that we had defined as being our subject area. And that area was bounded by 19th South, South Minnesota, 17th South, and South German Streets. And then we also expanded the area by 175 feet to see what kind of response we would get from those property owners. And we sent out a total of 19 surveys, and we got 11 back. And there's a table provided. And I'll maybe just focus on the responses within the subject area. We had three responses that said that, you know, the use of residential in, with industrial would, would be acceptable. We had two that said they saw a problem with it. And then we had one that said they didn't care, although they added a comment basically saying, "I don't want anything to change from the way I'm currently able to use my property." I should note that the responses that were, that would be acceptable, that covered a majority of the property within that area. So then there were some comments provided, and those are in the report as well. Should note that we also made a phone call to New Ulm Steel and Recycling because we didn't get a response back from them. And we thought it was important to find out what their thoughts were. And they indicated that they did not wish to take a position on the matter. They indicated that they were not opposed to man caves, but would not want to see families residing in this, that kind of area. We also generated some other information just based on comments that were either made at the Planning Commission meeting or that we've heard in discussions by the city council. One had to do with the amount of vacant industrial property that we have within the city. And you will find a table in the report on that subject. Just a couple of things that I found of interest, and when we talked about properties that qualified in this manner, we are looking at new buildings being constructed on an empty lot. So it didn't include building additions, like is currently taking place at Furman Edge or Out of Craft. So it's just, it's a new building structure. And we looked at the past five years, so that's 2014 to 2018. And during that time period, there were 25 building permits. And of those 25, 20 were for storage buildings. So I think we know what our growth industry is in, in New Ulm. The other thing we found is that we do have the potential for a deficiency in our I-2 zoning district, but we're probably three to five years out before that might become an issue. But it's something that we need to be, to be aware of. Another thing that there was, had been some discussion about was a concept called auto condos. It's something that you see in the metropolitan area. And we found such type of facilities in Chanhassen and Medina. And we also found one in Columbus. The facilities in Chanhassen and Medina did not allow residential use of the property. No one can stay overnight. In Columbus, they also, there's no residential uses at that location as well. There also was some discussion about a possible pending Mankato Auto Sports Complex. That particular use has now moved from Mankato to the Eagle Lake area. And we did talk to the mayor of Eagle Lake and asked him, you know, what they anticipated would be taking place. And he said they're currently having an environmental assessment worksheet done. And he said they're waiting for that to be completed before they get into the specifics of what they would allow. Now, Mankato staff told us that this was supposed to be a seasonal type of use, so it might be available for overnight, used from like the spring into the, into the fall, but that at winter time, it would, would not be occupied. And then we also contacted the League of Minnesota Cities. And there's kind of an email chain that we provided you with that provides information as well. That takes care of it.
Thank you. Any, do they have any questions for Dave?
It's a lot of information.
Yeah, we have a lot of information, but, you know, it's how we want to act on it as a council, you know? So as a council, do we want to rezone that property? Or do we just want to say it's end of subject and, you know, and proceed? That's just.
Based on your research, Dave, what, what's your recommendation?
Well, we have a zoning ordinance, we have a zoning map, we have a comprehensive plan. And I think we should follow those. If we desire to, to change them, I, then I think that needs to be a, a fairly comprehensive look at the, at the entire community, which is something that has been talked about.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we can take any action on it tonight, it's just a received study. And I know if we want to set up something in a work session to talk about it, because we need to do something more than this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with putting it on the end of the month's work session, if that's available for November. And then, then we can give direction to staff and how we wish we want to proceed. You know, we have the information, there's a lot of data here, you know? And then, I mean, I guess the biggest thing is we have to look at how we want our community to grow, or, you know, which direction and what's gonna be best suited for that area and other areas within our community, so.
So you're offering a motion to receive that into as well?
I'll offer a motion to receive the information on residential uses on industrial zoning districts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no, motion carries. Item 6.1, parking rec donations.
Okay, I've got it up. You had to come up on my computer, hang on a second, it's not there yet. He likes.
No, I'm not there yet either. Is 61 messing with us?
Got it, I'm back in, I think. It's not, mine's not coming up. I gotta reboot. Okay, here it is. I want to offer the resolution, waive the reading to accept the donations offered to the city of New Ulm Park and Rec Department as outlined. German Park Amphitheater, $200,000 matching pledge from an anonymous donor, $1,000 cash honoring Dr. Ann Vogel from Joel Greenwald, $200 cash from Leo M. Gugisberg, $100 cash from Mary Ann Cullis, $100 cash from Margaret D. Oswald, and $50 cash from Kathy Cullis. Dog Park, $425 cash from Happy, Happy Tales Dog Park Group, $84 cash from Happy Joe's Restaurant, and $110.86 from the Pizza Ranch Restaurant. So it's $2,069.86 cash, $200,000 matching pledge for a grand total of $202,069.86.
I'll gladly second that.
We have a motion and a second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no, motion carries. Resolution. Resolution. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. And who's gonna take care of the mayor?
He, he'll be glad to put him, send him out when he gets back to work.
We have an acting mayor under the charter, Mr. President. Sitting close to him.
All right, we'll see to get out.
I think they, the public knows that the mayor's got some health issues, and I think he can do them when he gets back. Don't you think? They don't have to be out immediately, I don't know, it's up to you.
We'll figure something out.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go on to item 6.2, New Ulm Fire Department donations.
I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading to accept the donations. $200 from Christiansen's Farm, Christiansen Farms, and $179.23 from Pizza Ranch Proceeds for Fire Prevention Week.
Second. We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point three, library donations and memorials.
I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading, and they don't list them out separately. It just says that they received donations, so we'll accept those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point four, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance and Trust Liability Coverage. Nicole?
President and counselors, this is an annual request. It's just a formality for the insurance renewal. It's the option to not waive the limits on the tort liability. So it just limits, it limits the coverage or limits what claimant would be able to get.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second. We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Grant agreement with the Brown Lions and Redwood County Drug Task Force.
Counselor and President, President and counselors, as the fiscal agent for the Drug Task Force, it's just up to us to accept the grant and authorize the chief to sign off on that grant.
And that's an amount of $135,000?
$135,000.
Yep.
It's actually a $5,000 increase over what we've gotten over the last few years.
Thank you. I'll offer this resolution as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point six, ordinance number nineteen dash zero three four, fifth series, first consideration.
President counselors, there's very few changes to the fee schedule for the year. There was a few from community development, but nothing, nothing large or earth-shattering, so.
Okay. So we don't need to read it, right?
Correct.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting the 2020 fee schedule.
I don't know if we even need to do anything, it's just the first...
It just says waive the reading, ordinance number. So we don't need to take any action?
Oh, it's just the first consideration, okay.
So we just leave it. All right. We'll go on to, let's see. Six point seven. Easement vacation for Scott Dirkman. That's the one that Dave was just talking about, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, this is the second part. So the easement area that we're vacating was for utility drainage, public trail, and public way. And as I indicated before, that easement area varied in width from twenty feet to ten feet, located in two different plats. Mr. Dirkman is requesting vacation of the easement areas in order to extend his storage facilities towards North Highland Avenue. We, whenever a request like this is made, we circulate that information to both private utility businesses as well as to PUC and city departments. And none of them had any use for that particular easement area, both current and in the future. You know, there were conditions that staff would recommend. One being, again, the new easement area being provided of twenty feet in width from on the north side of Carl Drive. Then there also was a payment of application fee, payment of a recording fee. And then we also wanted to be very clear that this vacation does not extend all the way to the streets. That we still maintain those existing easement areas that are on the street. So, takes care of it.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I can ask you a question, Dave. Does easement, is that reflected on the existing plants?
Yes.
Would they have to amend the plots?
No, we've never done that in the past.
Okay.
What we typically will do with the resolution that is approved by the council is we include a map showing the area that has been vacated.
And that will get recorded.
And that will get recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions a request of Scott Dirkman on behalf of all store, public store, to vacate the easement area west of North Garden Street and between Carl Drive and North Highland Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point eight, hardship deferral for the 2020 installments due for the 2018 USA improvements. You gonna take that one, Nicole?
This request was received by someone who was affected by the assessments for that project. They met all the qualifications necessary, and the deferral's been explained to them at this point.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Otherwise entertain a resolution? It's $497.40.
If she meets the criteria, I'm gonna go ahead and offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
Approving it.
We have a motion and a second, waived reading, off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point nine, request on the Brown County to withhold Market Plots Mall. Chris?
Yeah, so portions of the Market Plots Mall and George's Ballroom have gone into tax forfeiture. And part of that process is to allow the city the option of asking them to withhold those properties for up to six months to see if we can do some type of redevelopment project with them. Currently, on both properties, there potentially are some interested parties in developing those parcels. We would like to work with them to see if they, if there can be an agreement reached to facilitate some redevelopment of those properties. There is no obligation on the city's side to purchase those properties. If the deal falls through anytime during that six month, and if three months in, the deal doesn't really go anywhere, we can turn it back over to the county. We're not, we don't have to hold it for the entire six months. Some of the conditions, we'd like to ask the county, again, one, city's not obligated to purchase the said properties. Two, the city will be responsible for snow removal from the sidewalks. The city's obligation for snow removal will constitute the extent of its obligation to pay maintenance costs otherwise incurred by the county during the six-month period. And then the third one will be, the city will not be responsible for any liability for personal injury or property damage occurring on the property.
Sounds good. Any questions?
I know my concern obviously was number three, but, so, we don't have liability for any injuries on the property, but we have to pay for the snow removal.
Well, Mr. President, the statute says that the city has got the right to ask that it not be sold by the county at an auction for up to six months.
So for that...
That doesn't mean that we're renting the property or we have the use of it. It just means that we would have the opportunity to try and put together something, find a buyer, so it would be used productively. The statute does say that if the city exercises that right, that the city is supposed to be responsible for maintaining, for the maintenance of the property during the time period. And this is something that the city has done in the past. We want to make sure it's understood the limit of that maintenance is going to be snow removal. Not fixing the inside of it, or if there's issues that come up with that, that it's not going to be our responsibility. And because we basically only have an option to get it and are not going to be occupying it, there should be no basis for liability.
Okay.
Because we're not in control of it.
I think if we can move that property along, it's been sitting there empty for a very long time. And if we can get somebody who's interested in developing that property, we all win on that. The county wins, the city wins, so I certainly support it. I just thought it was odd that we have to pay for the snow removal. But that'd be a small price to pay if we can get this area and project developed, so.
But don't we currently do this, don't we currently do the snow already for the sidewalk around the mall, on German Street, currently? Because, you know, the mall doesn't own the sidewalk, isn't it, the city right away already currently?
Correct.
You know, because...
I mean, I've seen the city doing it all the time.
The former owner never did the sidewalk, the city staff already did it, so we're already doing the sidewalk.
The only addition that we would have to do would be the sidewalk going up to the mall in between the antique store and the street, that small little area there.
Is that, is the middle section still owned by...
That sidewalk is not part of the middle section, that's not part of the middle section.
It's still privately owned, right?
So.
Got it.
So people that have an interest in developing this property would talk to you, Chris? So you'd be our contact person if there's, if there's a developer out there that's interested or more than one, so.
Yep.
Let's hope something happens in six months.
Okay, any more discussion? Entertain a resolution?
I'll offer that resolution and waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion?
I guess my question is, it's just, what's our advantage? Is it our advantage, is it to kind of work with a known developer, is that the advantage?
Yes.
Rather than just having it...
Otherwise, excuse me, if it goes to an auction, anybody could buy it, and it might just be someone looking to flip it, and they're not really going to be serious about developing it. And the whole forfeiture process can take many years.
Obviously, yeah, yeah.
If it happens again, it'll just further deteriorate, so.
But we're not looking at it for internal use of development, for something of our use, okay?
Okay. Did we have a res, yeah, we did.
Yep.
Okay. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Changed the order on me.
That's all right. Item seven point one, accept a list of claims paid in amount of $8,211,549.30 and approve a list of claims to be paid in amount of $2,542,959.69.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on any? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, no? Whoop, that's a resolution, yeah?
No.
No, okay.
Nope.
Sorry, I'm looking at the last one. Motion carries. At this time, we'll adjourn and go into a closed session to discuss labor negotiation strategies.
It's already after six o'clock.
I know.